Motion to the Monta Leo, seconded by Mrs. Weiss, all in favor, five zero. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Tamio. Welcome, everyone. It's great to see our Elwood School community here this evening. We are honored to have with us this evening Assemblyman Steve Stern. Assemblyman Stern has always been a tremendous supporter of the Elwood School District. And as a result of his advocacy, in the past five years, Elwood has received bullet aid and grants providing for enhancements to security, classroom technology, the building infrastructure, and curriculum. and grants providing for enhancements to security, classroom technology, the building infrastructure, and curriculum. Earlier in the year, Assemblyman Stern partnered with us once again, and leading the charge, Ms. Manalita, she was there, and this evening, Assemblyman Stern is here to share that some incredible news for our school community. Assemblyman Stern?
Good evening, everyone, I'm New York State Assemblyman Steve Stern. I am privileged to serve as our community's representative from the New York State Assembly. And first of all, we say to all of the honorees, congratulations this evening, and to all of my neighbors. We wish all of you and your families a safe and enjoy the summer coming up. This one is a, this one's a good one. We'll let Heather talk a little bit about some of the details. But all of my friends on the board, all the staff, have been tremendous partners for many years, and we've accomplished a awful lot of great things, particularly for our great school district. This is the last meeting, it is a little bittersweet, but I'm going to sweeten it up just a little bit. Heather and I had the opportunity to work a great deal in the past several months to be able to make this happen this evening. And so it really is a great personal pleasure to present to Heather and to the Elwood School District, this legislative grant, and we'll talk a little bit more about all of the wonderful things that's going to be used for in the district, but a legislative grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you so much, yes, so today is like the culmination of nine long years. Through those years, you have been nothing but amazing, every time, you're just so supportive of Elwood. I think I mentioned the first time we were doing the Veterans Assembly at the middle school, and you're always giving back to Elwood. The last time I ran, he pulls up and says, "We have some discretionary funds for you, how can we help you?" And voila, we had forty thousand dollars and we had smart boards. So recently, we have been trying really hard to update our infrastructure, security is a major concern. The old systems and the new systems are not compatible, we didn't have the money to do this. So one day, as I'm driving to lunch with my girlfriend, I said, "You know what, let me just reach out." And I said, "Hey Steve, do you have any discretionary funds for us?" Once again, he's, "How much are you talking?" "Like a quarter of a billion dollars," and he's like, "Absolutely." So I was like, "Whoa, that was easy." No, but he's-
You're going around town with it.
So of course, we had to wait for the budget cycle and everything, but this is really so helpful. We had to take money out of our reserves to do this, money's tight right now, we have so many things that we need to pay for. So to be able to get this, to help us move forward in all aspects of our technology, but most importantly, that safety infrastructure that just was not compatible, and we just didn't have the money to see it through, it's huge for us. So thank you so much for continuing to be such a supportive partner to Elwood, and keep doing the great work that you do, I'm so appreciative of you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. This past Sunday, two amazing John Glenn seniors received incredible recognition at a awards ceremony at Bill Lombardi's. And here to speak about these amazing students is Mr. Dave Shanahan, our Director of Athletics, Physical Education, Health, and Nurses, Mr. Shanahan.
I'd like to bring down Lauren Lamenta and Anthony Bell, please go on down.
When we get to speaking about student athletes and the recognition, giving them recognition, it really is a wonderful thing. It is one of the highlights of my career, being able to do this. So I just prepared remarks, and I'm so proud of these two. Ms. Fallon, community members, fellow administrators, Board of Education members, and student athletes. It's a privilege for me to speak about the winner of the John Glenn, the winner of the two thousand four British Delicate Award. The Delicate Award is given to the top male and female student athlete in each school in Suffolk County. This year, fifty-six schools attended the annual brunch held at Bill Lombardi's this past Sunday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-four. The Delicate Award recognizes excellence in three categories: academics, athletics, and community service. Over the last twenty years, I've attended the Delicate Brunch, all twenty years, and on one occasion, before this Sunday, we had one finalist. Not too bad. However, this was an exceptional year. Newsday who selects the finalists, Newsday selected six boys and six girls as finalists based on their resumes. First, Newsday selected Lauren Lamenta as a finalist, followed by Anthony Bell as a finalist. So I was at the table with the Bells and the Lamentas, we were a staff, I was a staff. I kind of choked up, this is unbelievable. The Lamenta family and the Bell family were a staff, and see, but Lauren being selected as finalist for this prestigious award, knowing, sitting at the tables- Selected as finalists for this prestigious award, knowing, sitting with us at the Delicate Award, were the best of the best student athletes in Suffolk County. So both Lauren and Anthony were recognized by Newsday as finalists with exceptional. Newsday read each bio of each finalist. I was amazed with the accolades of each student athlete. When Newsday announced the female winner was Lauren Lamenta from John Glenn, it was one of the best moments of the year for me personally, and I'm sure for her parents. The hard work, dedication, and love of her family helped Lauren attain one of the best awards given out in Suffolk County. Truth be told, I shed a tear of happiness for Lauren for winning the overall Delicate Award, and for Anthony Bell being recognized as a finalist. Real proud of them, we are, we are, thank you.
This evening is a very special evening, so we've recognized the great work of the Board of Education here in Elwood, we've recognized amazing students, and now, we celebrate three important milestones in the careers of members of our Elwood School community. To our newly tenured faculty and staff, achieving tenure is a testament to your hard work, dedication, and unwavering commitment to excellence in education. We look forward to you continuing to be a driving force in fostering an educational environment of curiosity, creativity, and critical thinking. To our dedicated twenty-five-year employees, thank you for your remarkable dedication and service to the Elwood School District. Your contributions have touched the lives of many students, and are will be valued, and are part of the chemistry that is found in this amazing school district. And to our retirees, each of you has dedicated countless hours, boundless energy, and such tremendous passion to the notable profession of education. Your contributions have touched the lives of so many students, shaping their future, and inspiring them to achieve their dreams. Please know, each and every one of you, that the entire Elwood School community is filled with gratitude for your years of service. Congratulations, and heartfelt thanks to each of you. To begin our recognition, I would ask Dr. Sylvia Hood to please go to the podium, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Fallon. Well, I am honored and delighted to acknowledge the tenure designation for Ms. Dawn Valley, our Director, our Director of Math, Science, Technology, and Federal Grants. Ms. Valley transitioned to this position in the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, and has demonstrated exceptional leadership in this role. As we celebrate Ms. Valley's tenure, we reflect on several key highlights. This includes the successful adoption of a new math program, and the forthcoming implementation of a new science program. The annual steam night which Ms. Valley oversees is always well-attended, and provides students and families with hands-on demonstrations, experiments, and activities that showcase best practices in inquiry learning. In collaboration with our business office, Ms. Valley has supported the management and oversight of federal grants totaling three point six million. Ms. Valley's contributions and efforts have positively impacted students, teachers, and classrooms across the district. Her work ethic, attention to detail, and dedication are unmatched. And she consistently takes pride in seeing tasks through to successful completion with excellence. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Valley on her well-deserved tenure. We look forward to her continued success and contributions to the Elwood School community for many, many years to come. Congratulations.
Good evening, distinguished members of the Board of Education, District Administration, colleagues, friends, teachers, families, students, community members. I have the pleasure of recognizing three teachers for tenure this evening. The first, I would like to call to the podium to join me, just to embarrass them a little bit, is Ms. Deirdre O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien has consistently demonstrated her dedication and expertise as an English teacher during her time here at Glenn. Her deep knowledge of curriculum standards and effective instructional practices has been evident in her meticulous planning and preparation. Ms. O'Brien not only tailors her lessons to meet diverse needs of students, but also fosters a class environment where mutual respect and student engagement thrive. In the Roman class instruction, Ms. O'Brien excels in creating dynamic learning experiences that empower students to explore and articulate their ideas. Her commitment to student-centered learning is reflected in her use of strategies like Socratic seminars, which promote rigorous academic discourse among students. Furthermore, she actively seeks student feedback, refine her teaching methods, ensuring continuous improvement in her practice. Beyond her classroom duties, Ms. O'Brien has been a pro act contributed to our school community. Her involvement in committees focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion underscores her commitment to creating an affirming educational environment for all students. She has also been instrumental in expanding the literary resources that's available to students while enriching their academic experience across the English department. We look forward to the years to come, congratulations, Ms. O'Brien. The next teacher I would like to recognize, please join me at the podium, Ms. Emily Danna. Ms. Danna is a full orchestra teacher, both at John Glenn High School and J.J. Boyd Elementary School. Ms. Danna lives, eats, breathes, and sleeps, all being orchestra-related, related as she is exceptionally dedicated to her craft. Her student-centered approach is evident, whereas she integrates student interest into lesson plans and provides engaging activities, aside from the practicing play of the everyday lessons. One example of this was when her lesson plan, was her lesson plan that allows students to create a video interpretation of one of the scores performed, and then have the best representation voted on by her students to be displayed in the background of a concert. Pretty innovative, if you ask me. She fosters a collaborative and respectful classroom environment, encouraging students to analyze their own music critically and set personal goals. Ms. Danna's instructional techniques, including both self- and whole-group student-led analysis or rehearsals, help to enhance student learning, confidence, and ownership of their own improvement. Additionally, interactive involvement in professional organizations and extracurricular performance exemplifies her commitment to continuous improvement and serves as a role model for students. Ms. Danna's contributions continue to enhance the orchestra and the music department. Congratulations on tenure, and I'm sure even more accolades are to come. Last, not least for John Glenn, I would like to call Ms. Laura Ramundi up to the podium. Ms. Laura Ramundi has been a valued member of our professional staff for the past four years, bringing a unique perspective as a former English language learner herself. Her fluency in Spanish and firsthand experience in overcoming language barriers, allow her to effectively support both our Spanish-speaking students along with all other Ls. Overall, Ms. Ramundi's strengths lie in her understanding of language acquisition, her strong knowledge of teaching methods, a dedication to our inclusive school culture, and the ability to build positive relationships with students, families, and colleagues. When asked, the legendary Mr. Cole, who is here this evening, had this to say about Ms. Ramundi. From her initial interview, Ms. Ramundi demonstrated that she was passionately committed to helping Ls integrate and thrive in the school setting. This commitment, born of either her immense concern for students or her firsthand understanding of the ENL experience, has proven to be her most impressive characteristic. She is and will continue to be a tremendous asset to the John Glenn teaching staff. Congratulations, Ms. Ramundi, I bow hardly.
Good evening, Board of Education, Ms. Fallon. Thank you for the opportunity. I am Christina Moran, the Principal at Elwood Middle School, and I'm so happy tonight to honor Ms. Dana Dorian for her tenure. So if you could please come join me. Ms. Dorian is an outstanding person and even better, a family and consumer science teacher who puts her heart into everything she does for her students. Mrs. Dorian has had an eventful tenure, starting in the fall of 2020, just as we were returning from COVID. While at this time it was difficult to do things with people, Mrs. Dorian found a way to connect with her new colleagues, students, and their families. She has gone on to get married and just welcomed her daughter, Tegan, at the beginning of this school year. With all of these major milestones, Mrs. Dorian never missed a feat at Elwood Middle School. Then and now, Mrs. Dorian was above and beyond being creative and challenging her students while supporting them opportunities to grow and learn and become more self-sufficient. Mrs. Dorian often gives up her own time to sit with students to connect and create a safe space for them. She has the respect of her colleagues, students, and their parents, and runs an incredible program. She wears her heart on her sleeve and thinks deeply about how she can make things better for her students. We are truly better for having her and are grateful and looking forward to the years to come. Congratulations.
Good evening, Board of Education, the Elwood Community. I'm honored to be here tonight to celebrate some wonderful staff members at Boyd. The first one is Kristin Paulus. Please come join me. Kristin has been a teacher for 18 years. She taught for 15 years in another school district on Long Island before joining us for the last three years in Elwood. We are the lucky ones. Kristin has a strong literacy background and has high expectations for her students. She's very organized, creative, and dedicated. She's a progressive educator who has a way of making learning fun for her students. In addition, Kristin has a love of learning and continues to grow and expand her craft. At this time, I would like to congratulate Ms. Paulus on her tenure.
Who do you be, anyone? My name is Deise Deschanel. I am the Principal at Harley Avenue Primary School. And tonight, we are honored by Ms. Jill Reedla. Could you please come down to the podium? It is my great honor that we celebrate Jill Reedla on a new tenure. Ms. Reedla is a devoted educator at Harley Avenue Primary School, where she's excelled in various roles with unwavering success. Known with her expertise and professionalism, Ms. Reedla is held in high regard by her peers and students alike. Elwood is truly fortunate to have an individual of such exceptional character and work ethic among the students. Congratulations on this well-deserved milestone of a senior tenure.
Good evening, I'm Heidi Kelly Gormit, and it is my honor to begin our recognition this evening of our 25-year employees. So, Ms. Sally, can you join me? Ms. Sally is a beloved high school guidance counselor who has dedicated the past 25 years of her career to helping her students realize their true potential, navigate the ups and downs of high school, and plan for their post-secondary endeavors. Students hide her kind and soft-spoken nature to be easy to talk to when they need a shoulder to cry over. Ms. Sally strives to build a positive and inclusive climate for all students who walk through the doors of John Glenn High School. Several years ago, she worked with students to create the high school's GSA club and has been served as their advisor. Over the years, Ms. Sally has always been an active member of the John Glenn community. Her flow-building techniques as a class advisor are unmatched, and the therapy dog visits she orchestrates for her sense of calm to span students alike. It is an honor and privilege to know and work with Mrs. Sally. Congratulations.
Good evening again. At this time, I ask Ms. Scholes, please come to the podium. Mrs. Scholes holds a special place in the hearts of students and staff at Harley Avenue Primary School as a cherished second-grade teacher. Her dedication extends beyond the classroom walls, reaching into the Elwood community, where she's known for her genuine care and commitment. Ms. Scholes deeply invests in the development of her profession and the district as a whole. She actively participates in various committees, offering her expertise and passion for teaching in every opportunity that arises. Known as the leader in her field, Ms. Scholes commands respect from all who have the privilege crossing paths with her. Her unwavering dedication never ceases to inspire those around her, making Elwood truly fortunate to have such a high-caliber individual in her midst. Amy in the market for 25 years of service has left a mark on students, parents, and community members he has touched. Your unwavering commitment and selfish dedication have made a lasting impact and are deeply appreciated by all. Thank you for your invaluable contributions and for embodying the true spirit of devoted education.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Julie Bilema, the Assistant Principal of Elwood Middle School, and I'm honored to celebrate Mr. Matt Loro tonight. Mr. Loro is a caring and dedicated sixth-grade teacher at Elwood Middle School. Mr. Loro creates a vibrant and fun learning environment where students feel both challenged and cared for. He can be found giving out fist pumps in the hallway with his incredible whole fist, playing his guitar for students in the classroom, or serenading staff at our holiday breakfast with the rest of his trio, the Hobbie Giants. He spreads even more happiness to all on their birthdays by singing "Happy Birthday" and giving out colored cards. Mr. Loro is committed to student success and understands the unique needs of the middle-level learner, serving as a student mentor and seeking to connect and build meaningful relationships by learning about their interests and who they are as individuals outside of the classroom. Mr. Loro brings joy to the middle school and we are so grateful for his service to our community.
Good evening, PM five, Dr. Finn Annelies. And it's my great honor to welcome Maria Trusios to the podium, please. It is my pleasure to recognize Maria Trusios for 25 years of dedicated service to the district of Elwood. Mrs. Trusios is a highly motivated and creative individual whose passion for teaching and learning is evident and expressed. Upon stepping into Maria's classroom, one might mistake it for the school library. There are bookshelf-filled literature, recommended books on the ledge of the board, and multiple charts and posters displaying book reviews, reading strategies, and tips for identifying and using authors' craft. She has authored and received multiple grants to enhance student resources and has served on various committees throughout her tenure in Elwood. Her most recent contributions include assisting in the school's watch application process and being awarded a grant from the Booklove Foundation. Maria, we look forward to continuing this educational journey with you and are truly grateful for all that you do. Today, we celebrate a remarkable milestone for Mr. Vandennot. If you can come down here and join me. 25 years of teaching science in Elwood Middle School. Mr. V, as he's known, generally cares about his students' social, emotional well-being. He understands that middle school can be a challenging time, filled with academic pressures and social dynamics. He is always there to lend an ear, offer advice, and provide a safe space for students to express themselves. His dedication to fostering a supportive environment has helped so many students navigate these formative years with confidence and resilience. Throughout his years, Mr. Vandennot has served as an eighth-grade advisor, coached girls' softball, and shackled countless activities, including dances and field trips. One of his proudest achievements is holding the record for the most wins at the Luenai, a testament to the incredible spirit and determination he has fostered in his students. But beyond these accomplishments, it's the relationships Mr. Vandennot has built with his students that truly stand out. He is a unique gift for connecting with students using humor to break down barriers and make learning enjoyable. His classroom is a place where laughter and learning go hand-in-hand. As we look forward to the future, we know that Mr. V remains dedicated to nurturing curiosity, fostering growth, making a difference, one student at a time.
Good evening. I have the privilege of recognizing Mr. Todd Schwartz. If you could come join me. Mr. Schwartz is a beloved school counselor at Elwood Middle School. He cares deeply for the students, staff, and the greater Elwood community. Mr. Schwartz is dedicated to helping the development of our middle school students be the best version of themselves today and in the future. He does not do anything a little bit. When he does something, he does it with his whole heart and meaning. The number of students, staff, and community members that Mr. Schwartz has guided, supported, cheered on, loved, celebrated, and cried with over his 25 years of dedicated service is endless. This is not a profession for Mr. Schwartz, but for him, he is. Helping those around him see their potential, both on the field and off, is his superpower. It has been said, at the end, it's not about what you have or even what you have accomplished. It's about who you have uplifted, who you've made better. It's about what you have given back. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for lifting us all up, making all those around you better, and giving so much of yourself to the Elwood community. We are lucky to have you.
I have the pleasure of honoring two Boyd staff members for 25 years of service. The first, Anne Marie Chalat. If you could join me. Anne Marie Chalat has dedicated 25 years to the Elwood School District, starting as a kindergarten and reading teacher at Harley Avenue, and then moving to Boyd as a reading teacher, and you can't forget, a fifth-grade remote teacher. Anne Marie embodies collaboration, love, and a student-first mentality. Her support for her fellow teachers and unwavering dedication to student success have made a lasting impact. Anne Marie's caring nature has created an environment where every student feels valued and welcome. Her passion and commitment to students have been extraordinary. Thank you and congratulations for 25 years of service. And next, Liz Held. Today, we honor Liz Held for an incredible 25 years of service to the students of the Elwood community. Throughout her career, Liz has been a trailblazer in the integration of technology in the classroom, constantly striving to provide enriching learning experiences for her students. Her passion for learning is infectious, inspiring both students and her colleagues to embrace new knowledge and ideas. Liz's commitment to securing grants has brought invaluable resources to our school. Liz, thank you for 25 years of service, innovation, and inspiration. Here's to many more years of success and time with us at J.J. Boyd Elementary School. Ms. Virginia Rouse, would you come down and join me? Today, we have the distinct pleasure of acknowledging and celebrating Ms. Virginia Rouse for 25 years of stellar service to the Elwood School District. Since 1999, Ms. Rouse has held various positions from substitute teacher caller to clerk typist, senior clerk typist, and her current role of principal office assistant at the district office of curriculum and instruction. Additionally, Ms. Rouse has served as vice president of the Elwood Clerical Association and now proudly serves as its president. Ms. Rouse has truly been the backbone of the curriculum office. Masterfully and consistently demonstrated her ability to organize, research, review, maintain deadlines, streamline processes, and navigate multiple projects simultaneously. She brings a wealth of knowledge and a creative approach to every project, making her an irreplaceable asset to our team. With a cup full of compassion, a teaspoon of grit, now make that a gallon of grit, and meticulous attention to detail, she combines the essential ingredients for success. I am truly appreciative and grateful that I get the opportunity to work alongside Ms. Rouse on a daily basis. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Virginia Rouse on this incredible milestone and expressing gratitude and thanks for her 25 years of outstanding service. I have the pleasure of starting off with the honors for our retirees this evening. So, Marguerite Carvano, please join me. I'm happy to be here, Jean-Pierre. I feel like we just did this last year. So, Marguerite retired after 26 years of service as a teacher at James Boyd Intermediate School. She had the opportunity to impact students on all three grade levels. She retires to enjoy time with her three children, her granddaughter, her husband, traveling, and finally moving to the same state from Texas with her husband. On behalf of myself, as well as the faculty and staff at James Boyd Intermediate School and the Elwood School District, I wish this amazing woman, Marguerite, good luck, health, happiness, and your retirement will be a great experience.
Thank you for joining us here today to celebrate the remarkable career and retirement of Mr. Gerwelse. If you can come on down. Over 32 years, he has spent his entire teaching career in middle school, enriching the lives of countless students through math, MST, computer science, computer classes, and academic intervention. Mr. Gerwelse's impact extends far beyond the classroom. He has served in a disvisor in many extracurricular activities, including the yearbook, newspaper, robotics, honor society, and homework club. As a teacher mentor, he also has shaped the careers of many colleagues, some of whom were once his students. His commitment to the teachers' union, where he has served in many roles, including president, highlights his dedication to his peers and the profession. Mr. Gerwelse's evening appeal demeanor, wealth of knowledge, and ability to think outside of the box has earned him the respect and admiration of both students and colleagues. He is known for his innovative approaches and unwavering support for all. As Mr. Gerwelse embarks on his new chapter of his life, we celebrate the many lives he has touched and the legacy he leaves behind. His influence on our school community is profound and lasting. Mr. Gerwelse, thank you for your dedication, your passion, and your unwavering commitment to education. We wish you a joyful and fulfillment retirement, filled with new adventures and cherished moments with your wife Jennifer and your children Emily, Robert, and Heather.
I would like to invite Ms. Trisha Farrell to the podium. Ms. Farrell has been a strong advocate for our English-language learners since she started here in the district, if not longer. One of the most admirable qualities of Ms. Farrell is her unwavering belief in the importance of community and inclusion. She has worked diligently to bridge gaps and create a welcoming environment for her students and their families. Through her initiatives like family game nights where laughter and learning went hand in hand, and the E and O Thanksgiving, she fostered a sense of belonging and unity. These events were more than just gatherings. They were celebrations of diversity, culture, and togetherness, making every family feel like an integral part of the school community. A heartfelt thank you to you, Ms. Farrell, for helping so many lives during your time here, and best wishes for a fulfilling and joyous retirement. We will always be grateful for your incredible dedication and love for our students and community, and we hope that you enjoy your time and some much deserved rest and relaxation. Congratulations. Mr. Dave Anzalone, I would like to invite him to the podium. Mr. Anzalone's care and concern for his students is second to none. He can often be found, even up to the very last day, tutoring and motivating students toward success, above and beyond his standard class periods. His structured approach to lesson planning and organization of math concepts more than adequately prepared his students not only in math, but their future education as well. He will proudly share how his approach with his notes and graphic organizers he learned from one of his own daughters. If you have a few minutes, maybe four or five, or so, I am sure he would gladly tell you about it after the end. In the time I've gotten to know Dave, his passion and enthusiasm for math and working with students to succeed in math has never, ever been a question. It has been a pleasure working with you over the years, Dave, and I'm sure it has been for your entire department as well. I hope you enjoy retirement with many more fishing trips on your boat. Please stop by anytime and share your catch of the day, which I have truly appreciated you doing in the past. Best of luck, Dave. Congratulations.
All right, there was some pressure leaving my office this afternoon to end this with a rose, but Mrs. Mahoney, you'll skip it tonight, so. Mrs. Mahoney has been a teacher in the Elwood School District for 35 years. She spent the majority of her career as a kindergarten teacher and had one of the first co-talk classrooms in the district. Her background in special education made her the perfect teacher for this role. In 2009, Mrs. Mahoney transitioned to the role of elementary special education coordinator, where she lives with us today. Here she's worked to support teachers and families in identifying students with disabilities and securing services to help all children learn and grow to reach their fullest potential. She listens to parent concerns and agenda and supportive manner. Most recently, and perhaps her hardest job to date, was mentoring me in my return to the special education department, a job that I was forever be grateful to her for completing. Mrs. Mahoney enjoys her encounters with former students that she runs into outside of school. She remembers all of them and has fond memories of her time shared with them in her classroom. Her warmth and kindness have impacted generations of children in the Elwood School District. Although Mrs. Mahoney is retiring from Elwood, the legacy of her kind nature will be forever a part of our community. Peggy, we wish you nothing but happiness and memorable travels in your retirement.
So, we bring out a lot of people for this night. I see our old assistant principal came back. On behalf of the Board of Education, tonight's a very special night. It's a very somber night as well, because now we recognize those that are newly tenured. We congratulate those that have reached a milestone 25 years, where we get to say goodbye to some of our great educators and colleagues. For those that are newly tenured, let's give them some personal experience. Tonight, you're seeing retiring my kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Mahoney. My math teachers, Mr. Gerwelse. And I'm saying these stories not as a reminiscence of my childhood, but as an impact, that you understand that they've been so instrumental in children's lives throughout the school, me being one of them. Mr. Gerwelse had walked in as a afraid eighth grader, not understanding NCAA basketball or the college bracket, living in Duke's camp, not knowing why, and understanding math. So, those are the impacts you can add on your students. Ms. Carvano, I have my brother, and she just made lasting impacts and made construction comes alive, deep connections with children. Ms. Farrell helps coach championship basketball games and made deep connections with her students and her athletes. Mr. Anzalone, before and after tutoring. I ended up learning pentas, and he wasn't even my teacher. So, that goes to show you the amount of commitment and dedication that we have. That's the legacy that everyone behind. And that's the legacy that the colleagues this evening, that are 25 years, are going to continue to carry the torch on. And the newly tenured teachers, it's your job to continue to make sure that that pathway continues to be paved and that these connections continuously be made, because that's the impact. That's the difference. So, our entire base, we thank you. We wish you the best, happiness and health in your retirement. You get to enjoy all that you did. From the bottom of our hearts, Board of Education, thanks for your time serving the district. We appreciate it. Congratulations. Another one leaving us this evening, we're going on to great things, is our student liaison, Mr. Anthony Bell. Before Anthony gets up and gives his last final speech as Elwood's president, and he can come off, so I can embarrass you just a little bit. I'm gonna talk about Anthony and his dedication to his goal. Anthony was so passionate and dedicated. He would come from sporting events, running over here, making it late, playing in extreme weather, making sure that he had a speech prepared. And the speech was always so articulate and comprehensive and informative, and touched upon all four buildings. He never left out what was going on in all areas of Elwood. And to do that and do it as artfully as he did is really impressive. So, Anthony will be going off to Bucknow, the Freedom School of Management, in September. Well, probably August, right? Maybe July, it'll start too early. But he leaves us with, as you saw this evening, a list of accolades, a list of accomplishments. He is a peer of all peers, an athlete, a dedicated student, and something that makes Elwood very, very proud. So, Anthony, we appreciate all that you've brought to the podium this year and all the information. We will miss you, and we thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I would actually like to thank the board to start off my final report. Thank you, board members, for giving me the opportunity to be part of the board meetings. And I'm so grateful for this experience that I've gained in coming. I'd like to thank everyone for listening to my reports and what is going on in the district. And this one is a long one. With the school year ending, there are many activities going on throughout the schools. In Harley, Field Day kicked the month off and was a massive success. This was followed by a staff appreciation luncheon, which the PTA organized. The kindergarten students have been helping the grounds grow at Harley by planting flowers on the flower beds, and all the grades have been busy practicing for their parent course performance next month. As students and faculty count down the days to the exciting second grade send-off celebration on June 12th, everyone is enjoying various different school days throughout the rest of the school year. At Boyd, Field Day was also a great success with beautiful weather and thank you for so many family members showing up and making the event fun and special. Along with this, the third and fourth grade picnics were enjoyed by everybody, and the fifth grade carnival was successful. Fifth graders got to visit the middle school and meet their new core groups to help with their transition. And the first Boyd musical, Aristocats, was incredible with so many talented fourth and fifth graders displaying their skills. Fifth graders have their moving up ceremony on June 20th, and everyone is looking forward to waving at the high schoolers as they walk through the hallways on June 24th. At EMS, students are enjoying all of their end-of-the-year activities. The sixth graders had a beautiful day for their Elwood Park picnic, and the seventh and eighth graders are looking forward to their trips next week. The seventh graders are going to the sports arena, and the eighth graders are going to a wild play at Jones Beach. The eighth grade dance was a great success this past Friday, and students are eager to get their yearbooks and continue their moving up celebrations at the barbecue on Monday. Finally, last week, the eighth graders visited the high school and met the freshman buddies alongside getting a tour of the building. Lastly, at the high school. Today, my peers and I finished our last day of high school with finals and regent starting tomorrow. Many students have been taking advantage of the offered regent review sessions, and all events this year have had great attendance thanks to Battle of the Classes, which was won by our Class of 2025. A big congratulations to the students in our music department. We traveled the Six Flags Great Adventure on June 1st to participate in the Music in the Parks Festival. The band, chorus, and orchestra won best overall... won superior ratings, sorry. The chorus and orchestra won first place for the divisions, and the orchestra won best overall orchestra. Special awards were given to Joseph Barr for Outstanding Vocalist and to Lily Brown for her ASL interpretation of John Lennon's Imagine. Congrats to all. This week, Palwasha Ali placed 11th overall at the Gulf State Championships. Palwasha is the first female John Glenn golfing student and athlete to accomplish this feat. The Huntington Tony Awards also took place this Monday at the Paramount Theater, celebrating theatrical productions from all the high school schools in Huntington. John Glenn's production of Into the Woods was nominated for eight different awards, and we took home two. Nolan Reinhardt took home the award for Best Supporting Male Actor in Musical, and Gina Durico won the award for Best Male Vocalist. Melina Neofus was also nominated for Best Female Vocalist. Congratulations to the entire cast and crew for all their hard work. My peer Lauren Lomana and I were both named Delicate Student Athlete Award finalists, and Lauren was a winner, being named Top Student Athlete in Sub County. Thank you to the community for not only passing the school district budget, but also joining us at the color on this past Saturday morning and making the event so much fun. Everyone is looking forward to the event next year as it brought younger and older students together. Congratulations to Savannah Rubin for joining the National Honor Society of Dance Arts through LIHSI. And Marie Connes for being inducted into the International Dance Dance Society through LIHSI. Congratulations and best wishes on your retirement, Mr. Anzalone and Ms. Farrell. I'd like to congratulate all the 25 years of service recognition recipients tonight, along with all of those being honored for their tenure along too. Our spring concerts, incredible Memorial Day celebrations honoring the veteran, senior and junior academic awards, spring sports awards, senior banquet, dancing with the teachers, and caper night were all incredible nights and incredible ways to end off the school year. The senior class is looking forward to a final walk through through the halls of Harley, Boyd, and EMS during the senior walk in our capping gowns. And prom graduation at the end of the month, and we are looking forward to a meaningful time together. With my report concluding, I would like to congratulate Caroline Weiss for winning her election and being named All-School Present, and now gets the privilege of taking over as next year's, next school year's board liaison. Congratulations, Caroline. And thank you to everyone so much for your time and attention. And I'm so thankful for being able to have this valuable experience and be a part of our community and be a part of the board members. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening and summer.
Before we go on to two other combinations this evening, we are going to call back up our tenured teachers, retirees, and 25 years of service recommendations. And correct me if I'm putting my picture up here. So, we're getting everybody up, we'll go up on the stage. We can have a nice photo for the website. We can have a nice photo for the website. If you guys could just stay, if you don't mind. Everyone can just roll. If you have two more commendations, if you could. If your schedule allows, please just hang for a few moments. Thank you. I have two more commendations. Thank you. So we would like to recognize and celebrate an integral part of our boarding community. Oh, I'm gonna freeze on that, I'm sorry. Wrong script. We would also, we would like to recognize an exceptional leader who has made a significant impact on our school during her short period of time with us. We got here to extend our heartfelt gratitude to our interim superintendent, Mrs. Fallon, for her outstanding service and dedication. Mrs. Fallon, stepping into the role of interim superintendent was no small task. It required a unique blend of vision, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the success of our students and staff. From the moment you joined our district, you have demonstrated these qualities in abundance, guiding us with grace and determination through a period of transition and growth. Your leadership has been marked by a deep understanding of the needs and aspirations of our school community. And you poured tirelessly to ensure that our schools remain a place of learning, growth, and opportunity. Your efforts to enhance our educational programs, support our teachers, and prioritize our students and our families have been nothing but exemplary. Under your guidance, you have seen significant strides in programs, innovative initiatives, and a sense of dedication to Elwood, which is greatly appreciated. Your ability to navigate challenges with resilience and a solution-oriented mindset has been truly inspiring. Whether addressing budget constraints, implementing policies, or responding to unforeseen events, and there's been many, you have consistently shown a steadfast commitment to doing what is in the best interest of our students and our schools. As we reflect on this past year, we are grateful to the countless hours you invested, the thoughtful decisions you have made, and the positive changes you have spearheaded. Your leadership has left a notable mark on our district. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, administration, staff, students, and our community, we extend our deepest thanks to you and we hope that your retirement is for real this time.
So I'm just going to say very quickly, it has been my honor to serve the Elwood School District. This has been an amazing Board of Education to work with, administrative staff here in Central Office, the administrative team, teachers, every person that works in this community is here for the right reason. And that's for students, for achievement of all students, and for making a difference each and every day. This is a very, very special place. Don't ever forget it. And thank you for sharing your empathy. Go Knights!
Alright, now I'm gonna try to do my best to summarize nine short years in two quick pages. We would like to celebrate and recognize an integral part of our Board of Education and our community. This individual has dedicated nine years for the betterment of our school community on the Board of Education, but has dedicated decades to volunteerism through various roles within the PTAs, the Elwood Booster Club, the Elwood Civic Association, and various other organizations. Tonight, we gather to express our gratitude to our vice president, Mrs. Heather Monalito. Her commitment and passion for education have profoundly impacted our students, staff, and the entire community. Over the past nine years, Heather, you have demonstrated unwavering dedication and genuine care toward the aspect of our school district and our community. Your leadership has guided us through all triumphs and challenges with your resilience and wisdom, and I do mean COVID. You have been instrumental in shaping policies that enhance the educational experience for all of our students. Your advocacy, your vision, and your innovative ideas have fostered an environment where we, as a board, have been challenged to do our best. Your tireless efforts have ensured that our school district remains a place where every student has an opportunity to reach their fullest potential. You have been a champion for multiple pathways, curricular enhancements, and a proponent of fiscal responsibility. As we reflect on your nine years of service, we're reminded of the countless hours that you have devoted. Your family, your husband Joe, your children Sammy, Ashley, and Joey have all shared you with us in the Elwood community. And they too have given up countless hours of spending time with you so you can get back to the Elwood community. So God willing, we thank you, this people, we thank your family. Your legacy is not just in the policies that you've helped create, but in the lives that you have touched. On behalf of the entire school board, our administration, our staff, the students, and our community, we extend our heartfelt thanks to you. Your dedication has made a lasting impact and your contribution we remember for years to come. We are appreciative and grateful for your service and your unwavering commitment to the excellence of education. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with so many of you, got to know a lot of you over the years. I just wanna thank the community for supporting me and electing me to this position. You know, I've always stayed true to my word. I hope you all feel that I have done that. And I hope you all feel that I have always made the right decisions, keeping children at the forefront of every decision that I remember me. I feel confident that I can walk away saying I've done so. And support each and every one of you. And I thank you so much for being so dedicated to our children and our community. And it has been a sun ride. And I'm just really truly appreciative to all of you. Thank you.
Alright, I appreciate that you've taken the time to stay and meant a lot to us. With that, the board's gonna take a brief recess to go for fresh meats and some cake in the lobby. I wish to enjoy it with all of you. So I have a motion to take a brief recess. Motion is Monalito's, that means it's a scroll, all favor five zero at 9:03. Enjoy us in the lobby.